Pete, we had the application package in front of us. The applicants have also done some extra submissions for us and Nick Cannon and I will make see them there. One is a particular amendment, summary of the points that we talked about. And two is a modified drawing. I think they did. I can't tell exactly, I'll just break it quick, but the things we talked about like indicating vegetation and stuff like that is also included. As well as dimensions and the leaves that we just talked about. We'll get into it, but everybody should have these new amendments to the package. So before we can do any type of decision on this, we need to make sure we have a complete application. Then, once that's decided that things are complete, like all the gaps are filled in, then we would go through and do the findings of that. So those are the major steps when you go through that. Usually along the way, we'll find something and say, okay, did you make sure you paid attention to this? And what that, and fill the details of what they did for that. And when we did it the first time, we talked to you about it, at least if you tried to attend to us. So thank you. Okay. I guess maybe starting at the beginning. What I'm looking at is the amendment to the Benz Auto Sales document. We've outlined some of the things that we talked about in the good side. And bullet number one says, this is a proposed amendment and in addition to Benz Auto Sales, an area for cars to be stored before they are pressed for sale at the business. The next bullet says abutting residences. This was one of the things that we talked about, we wanted to know who would be abutting residences. And board members, is this okay to just review? Is it okay we go through this document first?
And then you're planning to go back to the checklist? Yeah, that's fine.
Because there may be some questions as we go along, some discussions. So number, the second bullet says abutting residences. My mother's, my mother Darlene's property abuts my property around this described lot. Ben's way goes down three hundred feet and it becomes her property, another hundred feet pinned to the lot. The only part that my neighbors, my neighbors' land abuts is next to Ben's Auto Sales. Their property goes from the Knoll's Road and ends around the back of my house, next to the garage. So that would be on the east side?
Yeah, it looks like two hundred feet.
There are a lot of trees separating their property and mine. There is no legal way for the neighbors to see my lot out back and be surrounded by heavily wooded areas from outside. Okay. So. I think when we last were here, we talked to indicate where the abutting residences were on this diagram. Do you recall that? And then. So I think I've seen what you're saying here says, so what I'm looking at now is the newly amended diagram, where you put oranges to say Knoll's Road at the top. I'm looking at the right hand side where it says Ben's land goes back four hundred feet from the Knoll's Road. So that would be perfectly, with the Knoll's Road across the top, going back four hundred feet. Ben, mom's land is a lease agreement. It says heavily wooded area. And on bottom, mom's land surrounding lot. So I think when we were there, you said that mom's property was immediately behind yours?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yep. So my land goes four hundred feet back and that's where hers starts. So mine pretty much goes like halfway across the lot, deep.
So the abutter in this case is your mom's land, right?
Yep.
I understand that.
Absolutely.
And on this drawing, it's the stuff that's at the bottom, it says mom's land. What we're talking about.
Right.
And then on the left hand side of the area that we're talking about, is there any, any abutting land?
Yeah. Just my mom's still.
Okay. So this side is.
Well, that's not fine, you're talking about, we're talking about the lot and not Ben's Auto Sales. The lot, yeah, mom's all the way around that. My neighbor's own just this little piece of land up here by the garage and the house where the actual Benz Auto Sales is.
Peter, it might be easier for me because I'm kind of playing catch up. If it was clear which lots we're talking about on the tax map. In the application, you said your lot is sixteen U?
Yep.
And I'm just wondering if that's the case, which lot is, which lot or lots are your mother's? Just, I can, you know, you can. I don't know if you have it right there, here's sixteen U. And one of the reasons I ask is, and maybe there's an error in the town tax map, but I think this is Shipwood Drive, which isn't on your property, I don't believe.
No, Shipwood Drive is all the way on top of the hill.
Yeah. So I just want to make sure we're looking at the right lot.
So, that's weird. So that daughter, mom, you should put drive?
Well, according to the tax map, that's silly.
That doesn't make no sense though.
Okay, well, that aside for a moment, that's.
These tax maps, just, they're weird. They don't actually seem anything like what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, but anyways, so are these, like, are these three lots, like, the ones that your mother owned?
Yes.
Okay, so that's how it wraps around like this?
Yep.
And this is your neighbor's lot, sixteen G?
Well, really, I think they own this little piece of sixteen G. I don't think they own any of this. I think we own it right now.
Oh, you own that as well, as sixteen U?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay. All right, that would explain, now I understand what you're describing.
Yep, exactly, exactly, like two hundred by two hundred and forty. That sounds more like a.
I got a question. A lot across the street on the other side of Knoll's Road, is that considered an abutting lot? Peter?
In my opinion, I think that we have, anything across the street is an abutting.
Would be.
And I think we can look at the definition in the organs.
I mean, the context we're discussing here, it isn't necessarily relevant, but because we're talking about basically screening of the abutter property, right?
Right, when we had the discussion about screening, yes, we're talking about that.
Abutter, any lot which is physically contiguous with the lot in question, even if only at a point, and any lot which is located directly across the public or private street from the lot in question.
So that would be inclusive?
But in this case, we're just talking about the.
That one.
Yeah, the lot to the, I guess it would be the northwest.
Okay, so, so. Based on the information that the applicant has submitted with the description on the amended drawing, and then the second bullet, I guess it leaves clear at this point as to what we're talking about for the lot. Because from my perspective, I want to make sure we satisfy our own, our own process, which will be entitled by interest in this property, make sure we're talking about the right piece of property.
This is a question I have, Ben can answer it. I think based on the numbers here for the lot sixteen U, which goes back four hundred feet, and your drawing, about a hundred foot of the storage area is actually on your mother's lot?
Yes.
So she must own sixteen K?
Yep.
Sixteen N?
Yep. I chose one more too.
Sixteen G, I think, which is directly behind yours.
All the, yeah.
She owns by seventeen hundred feet back, so.
So one thing, well, maybe you have it, Peter, or maybe it hasn't been given to us yet, but we'll need the lease?
And I guess that was copied by Anthony. He has it somewhere, I don't know, I don't know if he, they came and copied it. I guess it must have been.
Weeks ago.
And he notarized it and stuff. And he had a copy and we had a copy. We had ours earlier and she misplaced that because we've had papers everywhere and stuff. And so she couldn't find it pulling in. And so we was hoping Anthony was here, we could get like a copy.
Okay, so we have, there's a copy that can go into the file?
I got something in the, it's going to be a tomorrow, it'll be in Monday.
Okay, all right, that's what I was.
If it helps, he wrote their names and everything in his log, that has to do with that, so it's documented and everything.
And then I guess the other thing that just needs to be clarified in the application, Peter, is where there's a question about, you know, ask for map and lot number, it sounds like we're really talking about more than just sixteen U. We're talking about you own sixteen U, but you're leasing from your mother for, you know, a buck or whatever, you know, land, at least on sixteen G, I guess it is, right?
Right.
So.
Yeah, very good point. So, the application. Do we have it present?
Nope. I have, I think I have copies of it.
Okay, right.
Well, they made some corrections, I think.
Yeah, it's on page five of the application.
Because I wanted to kind of summarize the applicants. So to say on page five of thirty-eight, where it says location of the property being developed or for which permit is requested. You see that down there with the land and location information?
Yep.
Number eight.
Number eight, so the location that's indicated here is, is the other great tax map sixteen U. Right, so that's, that's part of the story, that doesn't start all of the story. Seems like what we have to do is have information about the other lots, that sixteen G, G and.
Well, yeah, it depends on what you're.
We only need the one that it's on though.
I mean, it sounds like you're, are you basically getting at least part of this lot or?
Yeah, no, it's.
Not on all those.
Wait, I don't, okay, now what's the sixteen Gs? And what's that I?
No, it does, it becomes hers, but only.
That's sixteen G.
Oh, maybe G one? That's what it is.
So maybe it'd be sixteen G dash one, not actual sixteen G.
Yeah, right, there's, because there's, there's another sixteen G.
So we need to make sure that that's on the application that's here.
So sixteen G right under it?
Dash one.
It's only, is it one or two?
No.
Just that.
Just that.
Okay, yep, that's my call.
So sixteen G dash one, Ben's, or Ben's mother's. That sixteen G is the neighbor? That's, that's mom's. The G one is mom's.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe we should just redo this lease agreement and maybe put the lease and land from the G one on there as well?
That sounds accurate to me from what I'm hearing this discussion is about.
Just summarize a little better of, get to the point of what's actually being leased maybe.
Correct. Yep. Okay, is that covered?
Yeah, yeah, no, that would be even better. I mean, without knowing what's in the lease now, hard to say.
Right, right. Okay, and then going down to the next bullet, it says you described your lot as actually three hundred feet down Ben's way. That rose, if I'm not mistaken, it's about three hundred feet, right?
Yep.
Ben's way and Anne, one hundred thirty feet across and two hundred ten feet deep. The square foot of this lot was twenty-seven thousand square feet, uh, feet square.
Right.
And this is important, so Ben runs up before me, being started just before we had these out, which is to say that in our last meeting, we talked about the dimension of the disturbed area, back there, and I think at the time it was two hundred by three hundred.
Right.
And so what he is describing here is that.
Well, when we, when we walked there, one of you guys was like, geez, this don't look, this don't look that big at all. And then I got thinking, I'm like, it don't look that big at all. And my brother's the one that like, he went to school with Jason, friends with Jason. He's the one that handled the whole thing with Jason when it was done, because I wasn't around much. And I talked to him like, a few days after that, we had, we had the walk-in and stuff, and I'm like, like, that doesn't look two hundred by three hundred. And he goes, because it's not, he goes, you wanted it two hundred by three hundred, but it was gonna be, it was gonna cost too much, it was gonna be too much, and we weren't, that weren't in the budget at the time. He goes, so we did what we could. He goes, and it was one thirty by two ten.
Okay.
And so I was like, we, we went and edited ourselves and sure enough, it is one thirty by two ten. And I guess Jason even has that recorded also.
Yep, yeah, that's really good. So the important result of that is that the square footage is under thirty thousand square feet, which by the ordinance then would not trigger the necessity, the need of having a professional engineer.
Right.
Which is an important distinction.
Right.
Okay.
So, which I'm glad you talked about that, because when we were, yeah, I don't know if it would be the center or not, I can't remember, but I think it's three feet, I think of a football field.
Right. Well, it made me think, it made me think too, the road is three hundred feet. And then you get down to the lot, and that's a lot shorter than three hundred feet. And you think about it, a hundred, basically it's ninety feet shorter, and it makes a lot more sense thinking of it like that. The distance of that road, and then the distance of just a lot going to the rest of it.
Yeah, good point. So I'm glad we talked that out and had a suggestion, so thank you for making that, making the dimensional measurements indicate on the plan. All right, so that was that bullet. The next one says, there is an order right lease agreement between me and my mother Darlene on lots to utilize a remaining portion of the property that is by a lot of, so. You guys hear somewhere?
Yes.
So that's all, that's all the kind of great defined that, but okay. The last bullet says, stormwater control methods employed are magnetic trenches surrounding my lot, where stormwater is able to run off and into those culverts. I don't know, culverts, I'm sorry, trenches. The vastest control methods are ditch turnouts along the driveway sides, culverts. There is a dirt and gravel, dirt and gravel and rocks that were put down on the lot and road as an established area where I can pull my cars. Every car I put there does move. They all eventually go to Ben's Auto Sales next door, where I, where I work for them and sell them. The others have gone for salvage at Ken's Gravel. Okay. All right. Thank you for that. I think it would be important to go back and look at the checklist to see if we have everything covered. Does the board feel like we should go through the minimal required application attachments first, or how do you want to do this? What is your preference?
It's all going to be done from my head, I'm just trying.
I would say the checklist, since it, it, did you partially complete the checklist last time?
No.
Again, the checklist?
Oh, I don't have it, I don't have it.
We didn't get there.
Oh, we didn't get that far, okay.
No, because we went through the application. Right. So let's start beginning of the application.
Oh, okay, all right.
So I'm on page four, applicant information. Yeah. Information for the developer of my lot, the owner Ted Morrison. Oh, and your exclusive information. The applicant says the property owner indicated. Some of the properties are made up, so that's a lease agreement, we're trying to point to you, right?
Maybe, no, lease agreement with the tax map, everything was, so it kind of like covers that.
I would say so, I just wanted to point that up with the board of directors.
Yeah.
Question here says, the applicant checked, same as property owner, question five.
Well, we could put, put Anne Darlene Bonneface in there, mom.
Or just Anne lease.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, ownership and lease, because that's what it is, you own part of it, you're leasing part of it.
Yep.
And the applicant is dressed in itself. Six, five is not five, if you don't have an authorized agent from. Person to receive all communication is Ben Horstman. What would be of interest to the applicant on the property, to say ownership? We actually have Anne lease, right, this is the word we're talking about. In my opinion, I would think it would be wise to say ownership, Anne lease.
As I say, you may want to move the chair up papers, you may be doing this two, four more times.
Yeah, well, that is just take it back to there with you.
And. Then under Saturday where it says, we're talking about ownership, it must provide documentation of title like the application, do we have that? We had, I thought we had a copy of the.
The deed.
The deed.
Yeah, there's one in the packet.
Okay, that was good. Does the deed contain any restrictions or covenants? It says no. Number, under land and location information, a location of the property being developed over which the permit is requested. The other great tax that sixteen U, we talked about this also.
One.
Yeah, sixteen G dash one, right?
Yep, yep.
Number nine, street, streets on which development or use is located, will take Ben's way, that's the drive. Total acreage of the parcel is four acres. Existing condition on parcel structures. Number, it says, unfortunately, number and dimensions slash uses, same cars. How does the board feel about this? Is it about completion of the body shop? Is that higher than so than not?
I would think so, because it's fairly substantial change from what was approved previously.
Correct, that was my impression as well, but just because I think it doesn't necessarily have to be that way, it's just more conceived. So do you understand what we're saying? So between the original application, something you're doing about years ago, that was approved and then now, the construction of this body shop, that's it? In my opinion, it should be part of, listed as existing condition on parcel, listed structures, even in cars. In my opinion, there should be some note to say that also body shop on property, something to that effect, because that's a change from what was approved before.
Okay.
Hey, you want to give the dimensions of the footprint of the body shop too?
Yep.
Twenty-six or twenty, I guess you just got that on the map. Just indicate goes on.
Okay, but and body shop, dimensions twenty-six by twenty-eight, signed and dated.
Turn the page to six, other existing uses of land, you said, car storage. Does the board feel good about that, is that sufficient or do you?
I'd like to have a, add a, you know, a little more definitive as to the length of time involved, you know, give me the parameters, a week, two weeks, three, the month, the what? What's the usual time, storage time?
Well, need to have that in. Well.
Yeah, it depends on the vehicle, but the whole goal is Ben through this is like we've downsized like drastically. And we're still doing it all the time, so I guess. Probably we could narrow it down to like, probably like sixty days.
Yeah, sometimes less.
Right.
You put a range in there, you know?
Yeah. And right, and I guess maybe anywhere.
Well, maybe ninety days just to be safe.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, anywhere from what, what, like two to ninety days?
Yeah, but yeah, range is fine. Because it describes as opposed to nine.
Right.
So we'll put two to ninety days.
On the storage container back there. Um, yeah, the shipping container is on the map. Um, and they also indicated the, the cargo ports that are there on the map. Um, so.
Yeah, that's fair.
I think that's a deal, Roger.
Put the shipping container.
Yeah, and the store and the cargo ports are also.
Do you think we should put cargo ports though? Because those ain't like, you know, around that thing.
Yeah, those can't run.
True, true.
But the shipping container is that, so.
Yep. The shipping containers forty by eight.
Eight by forty. Uh, number twelve, is any portion of the property within the shoreline zone, as depicted on the, on the shoreline zone map, you didn't get it, no. Uh, thirteen, is any portion of the property within a special, special flood hazard area? As depicted on the FEMA flood insurance rate there, you said no. Is the property part of an approved subdivision? Uh, you said no.
Peter, can we go back to the floodplain mapping? Um, do we have a copy of that or? The reason I ask is for this partic- you know. Lot, uh, or lots, the reason I ask is, um, when I was trying to get up the speed on this, I looked at the beginning with habitat maps. And that doesn't, not the same, but it showed some of the, some of the, um, backland as being flood prone. As, and as far as wetland. Um, that's why I asked.
That's a good question. So do we have the, the, in the.
Even on this, it shows that parcel back here at the biggest one.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is definitely some lowland nearby.
As well as way back here.
Yeah.
Well, and they, you've already provided a copy of the National Wetlands Inventory Map. Um, that shows that, um, part of the area may be a forested wetland. So that, you know, but i- in this, with regard to this specific question, um. I, I just want to make sure we're certain it's not in the flood, one hundred year floodplain.
So do we have a copy?
I, I would tend to doubt it, but, um.
Do we have a copy of the flood insurance rate there?
I'm almost positive that there is that.
There is a copy.
And, uh, it wasn't.
Rich, you have a.
Well, there's a copy of the full firm map in the packet. Uh, I'm trying to figure out.
Is this it?
Oh, is that it?
No, it's a fold out. It's eleven by seventeen.
Oh, it is?
I'm trying to figure out where it is though.
Yeah, so. So, yeah, the eleven by seventeen, so it's the third one.
Oh.
Okay, it's got a circle on it, down the, right down the line.
This is flood insurance program. Yup. We go in F I P. So did anybody find that?
No, I'm still having.
So do you have an application package?
Yeah.
So the, is the, uh, the longer?
Right, right, first map.
Is the third, is the third.
Right on the.
The one after that is shoreline zoning.
And then is there a third one?
Nope. Anyway, as long as we got it, that's the point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do.
Um, that's why I ask, because I, I don't have it. My packet. I could look at fingers.
Where, where is it on that?
Down in the corner.
By the circle.
Yup.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that, that clearly is not in the floodplain.
Yeah. That must be quite much. Yeah. Okay.
Wonder how many feet that was taken up, huh? A mile up, bigger, two miles?
Got the corner area covered.
Yeah.
Cool. We also said to, uh, continue on. Um. If we're, you go to fifteen, is the property to be developed, okay, within five hundred feet of a municipal boundary, you said no. Does anybody have any questions? I don't. It's not a D S C. Okay, proposed development, land use application overview, so provide a brief description of the development or proposal. Uh, size and number of structure, proposed uses, et cetera. You then gave this is a lot down by my road Ben's way, where I store my cars and car parts for my business. There are no building structures or ownership in there. Um, does the board, um, feel it's necessary to include at this point, like, the inclusion of the body shop?
Yeah.
At this, at this juncture?
I think it needs to be placed there.
Okay, I, I would agree.
As, as was earlier.
Depends on where you are, I guess. Do you have the inclusion of the body shop on there?
Yup.
Thank you for doing that. Um. Number seventeen, are any waivers of the application submission requirements or ordinance performance standards being requested in this submission? Number eighteen, um, application fee required to be submitted amount of cash. So was there?
I think there's a little wild list, you guys can, you can give a prediction.
Okay, so you just need to make sure that we're there.
Yeah.
Yeah, protection that we need to be inside. Thank you. Um, does this development or change of use propose or require extension or expansion of any of the following public infrastructure? You said no, because we're not, we're not. Expanding or extending. Public roads or public storm raisers or public sidewalks or, uh. Number twenty, provide an estimate of cost, uh, of the proposed development. You've indicated N A. And was that simply because there's no, um. No structure being.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, originally, yeah.
Yup.
That's what I thought about, you know.
Okay. Uh, is the board okay with that? I mean, uh, there is, I'm assuming there was cost to, uh, level and prepare the area.
Right.
Uh, is the board, do we, we need to have some indication there?
What's, what's the purpose of the question, I guess? I kind of think it, why are we asking that question?
I honestly can't, uh, I don't know of a reason other than we've done it that way.
Okay.
Maybe just to give an indication to the CEO about something, what it's coming in, if someone did ask.
The only thing I can think of myself, because I know at the DEP, they ask for a cost to make sure that the person applying for. Doing what they're going through has the money to do it or whatever.
I mean, that's a little different, because we, we don't get into financial capability.
We don't, we don't.
Or even any part of the application or anything.
I mean, clearly there was a proposed development cost to the clearing, the road. And construction and the construction of the, uh. Of the, uh, yeah, uh, uh, of the gravel, um, storage area.
My guess was that maybe they asked that, because usually these applications are when someone's building, like an actual building. But since we weren't, I thought it just wasn't like applicable. I don't know if that was.
How does board feel?
Well, I just think, I think anyone indicate, uh, uh, and, and none, what, and it would, how do you answer that, N A?
Not applicable. I mean, there clearly was a cost that you ought to pay. Uh, and I think just a ballpark estimate of what it costs for. The construction of the road and, and your storage area back there, you know, even though it's not a building, it, it's about the development overall, which is more than just the buildings. So, you know, whether it's like, whatever it might.
Yeah, well, you could say N A, because there was no building put up, just, uh, uh, groundwork was done. You could, it just expand upon it, you know, that's another.
Or because it's an amendment to. A business. It's just an amendment for a law.
You could say something like that, I mean, I just. I just, I just, I just wanted something more than N A.
Yeah, right. Rich, Roger, you want numbers? Approximate numbers for the gravel and all that, does that, did, did it take place?
I don't know what it would.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care, you know, whatever makes you guys.
Okay, let's do that. Please put a approximate cost for the gravel construction. When we understand what you're saying, uh, there's no proposed building or structure.
Yeah, I'm gonna put fifteen thousand. I did a lot of the work myself, you did some of the work, well, I'll be above my brother and his buddies.
I can imagine an aspect like, uh, they were saying that. They needed a cost for, to make sure somebody has got the money for it, plus, because I could talk with the law in case the damage property or. David's property or something like that, so, but.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna sign initially and put fifteen thousand of groundwork.
Yup, that'd be great.
That'd be good.
Because that's all you're developing, just the ground.
Remain.
Yeah, I mean, the ordinance doesn't explain why it's required, it just says it's required. The application.
Number, thank you very much.
Sure.
Number twenty-one, provide anticipated starting completion construction dates, uh, indicated N A. Um. I guess in the same vein, I would, I would suggest indicating something like. Groundwork has been completed, was, we have the possible dates for when it started and when it was completed, we put that.
That's scratching my head on that.
Yeah.
Well, or even, um, when we were out visiting, uh, I think you said it was done in two thousand seventeen. I, I think.
I think it was before that.
Or two thousand sixteen, maybe that's what you said.
It was in two thousand sixteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, even that would be useful.
Yeah.
And it would clarify that.
It was recompleted by, it was not.
I believe it was, um. It was the end of June, because it was right before fourth of July, and, I don't know, basically on its downtime.
Right.
And.
Or even summer of two thousand sixteen, something like that. I mean, because it's after the, you know, it's already gone by, so it, it's less important than.
Right.
You just said that it was, it was finished by then.
Well, you know, it was finished by like, it was towards like the end of September.
Maybe you said that, but.
Put down the year, I mean, put.
Just put summer of sixteen.
Okay. Um, number twenty-two, will any portion of the land parcel or structure be dedicated to public use? You indicated no. Uh, twenty-three, identify method of water supply, um, on, you can give none, you're not supplying water to the groundwater. Um. And I can't recall, the body shop, is there any water supply over there or not? Turn the page. Number twenty-four, identify method of sewage disposal, you said indicated N X, there's no, you know. Facility. Uh, twenty-five, what federal or state government permits or approvals are required by this proposed development or use? Um, main department of transportation, I would indicate no. Um, do you need a driveway permit, right?
Right.
Yeah, right, you do not. Um, and did M D O T require a traffic movement permit?
Now, my brother got some type of permit from Morris Tiles.
He's a road commissioner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For developing, not U T.
Yeah, right.
Since that's not a D O T road.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, moving on then, um. Main state fire marshal, no. Do you need anything from the main department of environmental protection? No. Uh, would you please indicate, no?
We did do that actually last time, it looks like it's on here, on the last date.
Okay, thank you. Oh, thank you. Um.
So Peter, just, um, finish what I was saying earlier, um. Uh, the. You know, because s- some of the property is in a forested wetlands as indicated by the, uh, National Wetlands Inventory Mapping.
Yeah.
That comes from, that they provided from U S Fish and Wildlife. Um, I had called DEP, because I, I don't know much about the law as it applies to, state law as it applies to those. But there's an exemption for when you, um. Alter less than forty-three thousand square feet, which is.
Forty-three hundred, isn't it? So forty-three hundred?
Uh, they told me forty-three thousand, an acre. Um. And, uh, I, I talked to a guy named Lucian.
Linua.
Yeah. Who was quite helpful.
Is Lori Linua's son?
No. Oh, God.
What is her?
This is, well, this is along the lines of how your wife always runs into, you know, adults that are, were hurt students.
Who is they? So, uh, Lucian's mom is Lori, Lori Linua, who is the Oracle database person.
Yeah.
Down in the basement.
Now I really feel old, um. The, uh, anyway, I, I just wanted to clarify that it, it, it is forested wetland, but there's an exemption for smaller sized.
Okay, thank you for the call.
Well, at the time, I thought we were talking.
Right.
A larger area.
Yeah, yup.
True.
Okay, um, is the main D H H S drinkable water, um, program approval, the public water drinkable system, you indicate no. U S Army Corps of Engineers, no. Um, and, or other, yes, no, there's nothing else indicated. Are you applying exclusively for approval to mine an existing sand or gravel pit for the next five years? You said no. We then say, no, no, or not, proceed to question twenty-seven, point twenty-seven, how will development or proposed use? How will development or proposed use of controlled conditions of dust, ash, smoke, particulate matter or other flues? Um, indicated there'll be no flues because the cars are not running until they are moved for into the shop and then sold. Does the proposal meet applicable federal, state and state air quality regulatory requirements? Indicate yes. I think presuming, because you indicate there's not gonna be any cars running, you indicate no. Estimated peak daily vehicle traffic to be generated? You've said a few times per week, uh, estimated peak hourly traffic volume, um, none. It sounds like your unit of thinking is more like weeks rather than hours. How were these figures estimated? Explain or cite methodology used. You've indicated, uh, vehicles are only moved when needed in a mechanic shop and are sold when completed. Turning the page, twenty-nine. How many vehicle access points are to be provided from a road? Are you indicating one? Uh, what is the proposed speed limit of the road for which access?
Here, um, I have a question, based, when we were, uh, on site and talking, um, my recollection is that access to the body shop is from a driveway from the road to the body shop?
Yeah.
So, there's really two. There's Ben's Way plus the driveway to the body shop.
Well, there's access to the body shop, actually, from Ben's Way, or pulling in my mom's driveway.
Oh, that's your mom's driveway?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so that's existing?
Right.
Okay, yeah, I saw the, you know, it was pretty muddy, but, uh, I don't know how you'd get a bit, a regular car through that, but, um.
Well, you need to, we park them there, but like, that's another thing, it's, Jason's supposed to come back and put more gravel there at some point.
But the door, uh, the garage door is on, on the roadside, correct? But, but that access is from your mother's driveway?
Right.
Okay, all right.
Cut, I gotta, I wanna back up a little bit, um, back to, uh, item twenty-five. And the question is, what federal or state permits, government permits or approval are required by this proposed development or use? I'd like to zero in on, on the, uh, what state government permits? Is, is this activity here part of, uh, selling, uh, cars?
No, it's just a place, it's a place to store cars, to get ready for sale. Just because I was, I accumulated too many vehicles and I just didn't have the space on my, like, car dealer lot to put them, so I wanted to, so I put a road in, wanted to put them like out of sight, just so I didn't have a million cars that rain in the my driveway in the law and have the neighbors complaining how bad it looks and stuff.
Well, okay, what I'm thinking is, um, I think I'm, I myself and maybe some of the other members here on this board may wanna get clarification as to what the business here is. And i- is it part of, um, getting license, uh, for a, uh, dealer, dealer license? You know, for the fall within definition? And, and let me, let me finish. I'm talking to the board, um, and I think, uh, we need to get some, talk to, uh, the Secretary of State and find out if this, if this activity is part of, uh, come under their regulation, if it is, uh, we need to have that clarified. So they, you know, part of that, they would need to, they wanna know about things like this, and we can get a compliance, uh, uh, a site compliance, uh, evaluation if, if, if they are done or if they're necessary, so. It's, it's, that's a question I have, I think, if the board needs to think about it. So, I'm bringing it up now, so that's, that's the, this, that would have come into play on item twenty-five.
Just hear the question, Ben, do you, are you, have a, do you have a dealer's license?
Yeah, I have a dealer's license.
Is that part of your concern, whether or not he's got a dealer's license?
I'm sure he does, but they would, part of the, when, when, when a business expands, uh, it's, the, uh, the, the regulatory agencies like to know what's going on, and, uh, so it's, that's why I want a clarification from the, uh, state as to would this, uh, quite, would this, this be, would this need to be, uh, they need to be aware of this, what's going on. I don't know, I'm asking.
It's not an expansion of my business, because I'm not selling cars from that spot, I'm only storing cars at that spot.
Well, that's, that's fine, but I think, uh, I, you know, I'm, again, I'm talking to the board, and, uh, those are the kind of questions we need to ask, because I'm not an expert in this particular type of business, and, and I don't think you people are even so.
Well, I, I hadn't thought about, um, and the part of that question where it asked, you know, are there other state permits required? I hadn't thought about the auto dealer's license, uh, where it says other. At a minimum, I think that should be completed as yes, and auto dealer's license, and just for completeness, um, whether or not we need to contact the Secretary of State's office, I have, I have no idea.
So.
Yeah, we can break that in, uh, that you, you know, as part of it, I guess, auto dealer license.
I mean, this is in some respects, when we, you know, permitted the, uh, uh, medical marijuana facility, you know, we got into what licenses did they have from D H H S?
Right.
I think we wanna be assured that, you know, people, businesses that come for us have the appropriate state licenses that they're required. Uh, I'm not sure what our interest is beyond that, but that's, or at least speaking for myself, I can't speak for others.
So, um, did, Pete, when you bring this up, are you thinking that we would wanna have assurances that the applicant has a car dealer license?
And also that, that it, it is in compliance as well.
I, I don't know anything about these licenses, do they give you like a serial number or a license number?
Like, as far as, like, as far as like my used car dealer license, I mean, I guess, as far as my own property goes and stuff like that, there's not any, there's no limited number of cars that I can and cannot store or put there. It's just if you have the, the land to do it or not. And my only point of it was, is just try not to clutter them all right there, making it an eyesore for everybody that drives by.
Right.
Right, because what you can see at the business, which you guys do have all the information for that, what that application from years ago. The business lot is, you know, it looks neat, it's professional, and the public is able to drive by and see the cars that are for sale lined up there in that smaller area. So, the purpose of this road and lot is anything before it gets to there and is ready for sale, it temporarily is stored down the back, so that there's not a pile of, you know, stuff there.
Right.
Another question, and again, excuse my ignorance about this, but i- is this a, what, the license that you have with them, is this something you have to reapply for every couple of years or something like that?
I, I, I renew it every year.
Every year?
Pay to renew it, yeah.
Okay, so it's like other professional licenses and.
Right.
So, it sounds like the board's interested in having, um, uh, information about the fact that the applicants have, uh, are compliant with having an up-to-date automobile license.
Yes.
There was one thing that you had mentioned, you had done some thinking about this, so.
I can.
Provide a copy.
I can bring copies and bring dealer license and, and my, uh, insurance and coverage and whatnot.
Thank you, that would be helpful, and then, for the sake of question number twenty-five, I, I guess, I hadn't thought about, oh, other, it's pretty broad, um, but I guess that's what we would say. Name, automobile's dealer's license, and then submit a copy piece of that. Pete, thank you very much.
Okay.
We were, oh, we, we have thirty, twenty-nine or thirty. Okay, twenty-nine, how many? Oh, we talked about how many vehicles.
Yeah.
We had a discussion, one or more, and we're laying out one. And then, the proposed speed limit there, five miles per hour? Uh, name of contractors responsible for earthwork or soil disturbance, um, and their respective name, D E P, certification, emergency certification number. So, you said Jason Stevens, uh, built the road and put down the rocks and ran it for a while. I think we had, we talked to him when we were on site, we said, we get the, um, certification number, so we need to have that.
Yeah.
Oh, we got that.
Okay, all right, so that's, that's, uh, that's right now.
To be honest with you, we've tried to contact him more than a few times, and for some reason.
He was talked to a while back, my brother talked to him a while back, and then I told my brother, I was like, wait, give me his number, I need to call him and get the D E P number, but it was like days after, and I think maybe he's on vacation, because his phone has been going right to voicemail for like the last week.
I haven't seen Chase.
He's either, nobody has, so I'm thinking.
He lives just down the road from me.
Right.
Typically.
And I haven't heard the introduction much, Scott.
Right.
Do you think maybe a Fourth of July trip or something, just because it's weird that his phone is going to voicemail?
And it makes sense. Okay, so we need to, okay, moving along, uh, thirty-one, is the site or structure located on a parcel listed on the National Register of Storage? Indicate no. Speaking for myself, we tend to agree, because we know their own, or I think they're, and your, your option is not.
Or anywhere close to one.
Right.
If it was, maybe I'd be red.
Worst attraction.
Um, the next item says, well, it says how impacted the historical site structure would be compared to that applied by the um, are any archaeological sites identified by the main state Historic Preservation Commission present on the parcels? Indicated no. And the next, the next question, somebody could add, to me, would not apply. Thirty-two. Will equipment, machinery, inventory, parts, salvage, waste collection, containers, dumpsters, or other materials associated with proposed use be stored outdoors? Uh, we're gonna give yes, and that's probably the, uh, the reference to the. And then, if yes, please describe the types of items to be stored outside, and what measures will be taken to prevent children from accessing? So, you said cars and car parts are stored down the lot, uh, children cannot and do not access. We walk off the entry of the vehicle upon, uh, leaving the premises and have a camera. Okay, um, how will dumpsters be screened, um, from neighbors and public roads? You say there are no dumpsters. Number thirty-three, does any portion of the parcel include critical natural areas or uh, significant wildlife habitat, including deer wintering areas identified and mapped by main again, through habitat program? Uh, you've indicated, no, I wanna pause just for a second. George, you had, you had done some research on, on the beginning, beginning of habitat map?
Yeah, there's nothing else there other than that, uh, forested dwelling.
So, are you satisfied?
Yeah.
Moving along, it's not, no. Thirty-four, which is, it says if parcel includes wetlands identified on the National Wetlands Inventory map, describe how impacted the wetlands would be if we were to mitigate it. There's nothing written in there, so. How does the board feel about that? Because according to the National Wetlands Inventory map? If I'm reading this right, where their lot is and the proposed use is, do not touch a wetland area. Are you all reading it this way?
Well, I, I couldn't tell, so I went back to the maps, the online map, and, and got a different snapshot of it, you know, in terms of the little broader view, and, and they have a, um, uh, distance measuring device on there. And so, I measured the distance, uh, the linear distance from, uh, the edge of the road, Knolls Road to the start of the, uh, wetland, and I can show, it's easier to show people, let me give that to you first, though. And, um, the, uh, and it's, uh, oh, I guess you, well, I gave you the original, like, what does that say, two hundred seventy-five feet or something like that?
Yep, two seventy-three.
Yeah, uh, the, uh, so that would, you know, if, uh, comparing that to the site drawing where it's three hundred feet back, uh, the road is three hundred feet, and I, I mean, this is approximate, let's be honest about that part, but um, it would seem to me that the, um, area where the vehicles are actually stored may at least be partially in what was forested wetland.
Right.
Now, what I'm not sure is if Ben's Way actually, as, as a site drawing portrays it, is actually perpendicular to the Knolls Road? Or if it's at a slight angle? On the site drawing, it showed it's perpendicular, so that's why I did it that way, that took the measurement that way.
Yeah.
But.
It looks like, see, that looks like School Drive coming up here, I'd say.
This is your place right here, right?
That's where the shop is, yeah, and the road should be like, comes right in like this. So, it's gonna be somewhere like in the, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's close. I don't think it's quite there, but it's pretty close.
You know, when we did the site visit, I could easily see where some of the surrounding woods would be classified as a forested wetland, because of, I mean, obviously, it had standing water pretty recently when we were there.
Yep.
Having said all that, in terms of whether there's something worth mitigating there, if it's not, doesn't, if the state exempts it, it's kinda like, what's the point?
Right, right, yeah, exactly.
I mean, I, I mean, and it's a forested wetland, it, it's per, its primary value is i- assuming it's not part of a deer yard or something like that, is for floodwater storage,
Yep.
groundwater recharge, um, you know, a- again, assuming it's not a wa- important wildlife habitat, which it doesn't appear to be mapped as such.
Right. So, for the exemption portion that we talked about earlier, so, if, if under acre, that, that amount of distrib area is permitted by exemption.
They must have changed that number sometime in the last eight years, because I know it used to be forty-five, forty-three hundred square foot, because we always talked about a tenth of an acre.
Right.
Well, I, 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 you know, I know nothing other than what I was told in the telephone conversation, because frankly, I went to the law, looked at, I couldn't find anything one way or the other, um, I didn't look at the E P's regulations, I, I just decided to make a phone call, but um, the, um.
Well, if it is forty-three thousand square feet, I agree with George, it's, I think what you're saying is. I guess there's no need for us to be terribly concerned that the state isn't concerned.
Yeah.
It's actually exempt.
Right.
Well, particularly.
He, he, theoretically, he can fill in one tenth of an acre. So he's, could be, you know, you have to make your determination, did he fill in more than one tenth, I didn't, I don't know. Do we want to go there?
Um, I think the answer is no, but getting going back a little bit.
Yeah.
Um. From my perspective, um, because the number was larger, what, what Jordan was told, which means a whole acre, not just a ten, but a whole acre could be done. And we still would, that would still be exempt, I mean, we still wouldn't care.
Okay.
Right?
Right.
And, and so then the question becomes, how much of this, which is close, might touch what would be part of what's listed as a forested wetland?
I don't want to go there.
Clearly, clearly, probably less than an acre.
Yeah.
Clearly less than an acre.
That upper side, that bank is cut away pretty good.
Yeah, no, there's some dry ground, there's higher ground there that you're obviously cut into, um, so that clearly is not part of the wetland.
Right.
It's really the, um.
Lower end.
Yeah. And, uh.
So, but based on the information we were given, uh, I think we're okay.
I mean, I think that's more intended, you know, I think it would be very different if this was like an emergent swa- marsh.
Right, well, we had a four-wheeler, snow, four-wheeler slash snowmobile trail through there before, and that's why we kind of used that. Because it's already cleared a good, you know what I mean?
Oh, yeah, you know, I could actually see that on Google Earth.
Right, so.
I, I didn't know what it was, but.
Right, and that's why we always use access for a four-wheeler and snowmobile.
So, you know, i- if, as Ben showed me, you know, it's, the access road, Ben's Way is actually not, and it doesn't show up on here where that's no, whole, whole snowmobile trail is. But if it's more at an angle, then, uh, the, the measurement that I did would be an underestimate.
I see.
And that's important. To the extent that three hundred feet, that Ben's Way is three hundred feet long is depicted on the drawing, site drawing.
Are you saying like if Ben's Way, uh, the question I had earlier in my mind was, if Ben's Way was newly created at three hundred feet, and say it's ten feet wide.
Yeah, Ben.
Three thousand.
Yeah, no, I, uh, I was using that just as a way of locating where the wetland was, not that Ben's Way per se was in the wetland, because I don't think it is. As wet as it is on one side there, um, the, uh, at least according to the mapping, I don't think it's in the wetland. Uh, I was just using it as a way to determine how likely it was that the auto storage area was in the area that's shaded dark green on the National Wetlands Inventory Map. And, and since that's three, you know, a hundred yards long, according to the site drawing, um, that's, you know, if it's, if it's, um. Let's put it this way, the, i- if the road, if, if this is, um, i- if my estimate's under, which it sounds like it might be. Then that just means all the, there's all the less square footage in, potentially in the wetland.
Right. So, based on those discussions, um. Thirty-four, relative to number thirty-four, do we need any more information filled in there?
Well, it, you know, obviously, the damage can't be avoided because the projects already been completed.
Um, right.
So it really comes down, can it be mitigated and should, should it be mitigated, and. My judgment, my personal opinion is that the amount of damage is marginal, uh, the area impacted is probably not that great. And if the, as Rich said, if the state doesn't care about it, uh, you know. Kind of puts us in a difficult situation to do much about it.
Right, right. Yep, you would, we would be in a very difficult situation about that, so, um.
I do think something needs to be inserted there, um. Uh, along the lines of do minimal impact, none needed, or something of that nature, no mitigation needed.
Did you say apparently, uh, state D E P, uh, does not have any issues with this? Leave it at that, make a general statement? We don't really know one way or the other, I mean, we can, you don't have to go in a lot of detail, it's just.
Well, you, um. It's different ways of skinning that cat, I guess.
Right.
Yeah. How do you want to say it?
Yeah. It, it probably really doesn't matter much to me which way we say it, but something, you know, like, and George was said, you know, this, the. Area has been prepared, so we can't avoid whatever has been done in terms of, because that's what the question's getting at, can it be avoided or can we mitigate the impact? Um, that the land has been, um, dirt has been moved already. I think I like the second statement Dave said about, um, about minimal margin of land has been mitigated, something that I want.
Yeah, marginal, marginal impact and impractical to mitigate.
That would be really good, marginal impact, impractical to mitigate.
Boy, I like that one.
Yep.
That's.
I hate to please.
That's, that would be great.
Please save work.
Can you repeat that one more, please?
Marginal, marginal impact and, uh, impractical to mitigate. I mean, this, you know, I would have an entirely different position on this if it was a, you know, you're a flooded, emergent type of wetland that.
Right.
You know, that has value to water bottle or something of that nature.
Right.
That's not the case here at all.
We're okay to move on?
Mm-hmm.
Is development or change if you located on a hilltop or lake shore? The answer is no. Other than from safety signals or other emergency warning devices, will maximum noise levels produced by the proposed exceed sixty decibels between seven and nine thirty, seven A M and nine thirty P M? Or forty-five decibels between nine thirty P M and seven A M at the property lies or the lake shore? Uh, you said no. Uh, will these noise standards be exceeded at any time during the course of a single day for more than fifteen minutes? You said no. Identify which activities are likely to generate sound in excess of the above standards? Please list and describe. And you said, uh, you cannot hear any noise from the moving, from moving the vehicles because they are down a ten-foot road. And, um, under what noise monitoring suppression mitigation blocking measures are proposed to, and do not need to be there? Presumably because you can't hear anything. Uh, no, planning board may require, in the condition of two or noise monitoring, two and short compliance for the ones, noise standards. Number thirty-seven, will development, construction activities be conducted between the hours of nine thirty P M and seven A M? No. Our residential use is present on, our residential use is present on abiding land parcels? Yes or no, you indicated no. If yes to both, what noise pressure measures will be?
There is residence on the abiding parcel, but.
There is.
But it isn't yes to both questions, so nothing more is needed, so, I think it just needs to be corrected.
I think it needs to be corrected too, so rather than no, we'd have to say yes, if you're done well, are invited.
Actually, we got yes on it from the last board we did.
Oh, we did? Okay, alright, great. I'm looking at a copy from the very first one. Uh, provide a number, design, location, and illumination intensity of, of outdoor lighting fixtures, you said none. Um, will light illumination from the development or use beyond the property line exceed point five foot cameras? You said no. Um, describe off-street parking to be provided for the development use, including number of general use parking spaces, handicap spaces, and oversized vehicle spaces to be provided. You said no off-street parking. Um, how often and where will the delivery trucks be unloaded and loaded? Uh, not on this road, only occasionally at the business location, moving Ben's road. Um, are we thinking like, would it be a delivery truck?
It wasn't a delivery truck down that road, right?
Would it be like a car hauler or something? The what? Down this, down the road, you're saying?
I don't know.
Says how often and where will delivery trucks be unloaded and loaded? You said not on this road, only occasionally at the business location, Ben's, oh, I got you, Ben's, sorry. Alright, my bad.
Yeah, it's all gonna take some short break.
Uh, will vehicles loading, unloading protrude into a public road? Uh, you said no, do delivery vehicles need to be backed into unloading, loading areas on a public road? No. How many loading vehicles do you provide as a, as part of off-street parking? Zero. Describe measures to be provided for security and fire protection for the proposed development or use. Uh, we have cameras in trees and we block roads off from others. So, that's really for se- for security stuff. I'm assuming that since it's no, nothing else going on, you're not going to have fire protection for. Is the footprint of any building greater than ten thousand square feet? You said no building. Will development or use exceed the cap capabilities of the Calgary Fire Department? You said no. Will development or?
Can I just back up on number forty, is the footprint of any building greater than ten thousand, so you're saying, there is a building back, you know, it's less than ten thousand.
Yeah, well, yeah, the ship, just the shipping container.
I thought, I thought there was a, I haven't seen, I haven't been on the site, but you, you guys are talking about.
The auto body shop.
So, and, and is in this particular, yeah, we're talking about, right?
But that's clearly less than ten thousand, so I think the answer is yes, there is a building.
Yeah, so, so do you want to kind of clarify that, uh, there are, but they're only, they're less than together ten thousand square feet?
I think the, the answer, the answer to that question, I think is no. There is a building, but the answer.
But, but less than ten thousand.
Yes. The answer is no, it's just that, like you said, there's a building.
There's no building over ten thousand.
There's no building under, over ten thousand.
Yeah, rather than no building.
Okay, can you add in over ten thousand?
Sorry.
Poorly worded question, but, you know, I need a little clarification.
Yes. Um, will development or use exceed, oh, we've read that. Will development or use depend upon the Canada County Sheriff's Department for Security Services? You said no. Um, is the proposed development or use located within a village district? It's shown on the comments of the plan, um, in the district map, my name's really no.
Wait, can we just back up for a second? Trying to get picky, but, uh, uh, the fire department, right, Calgary Fire Chief, regarding whether development or. Now, we got, we got this paint shop here, right? I think the fire department need to know about that, right? Is that what, that, that, what, you know, I don't know, what's, why is this question being asked? Then, why is this, so, let's, let's kind of talk about that.
I'm not sure, I think it's not on the law, but. I mean, I don't know if it'd be any different, like.
But even that body shop won't exceed what they can handle.
Pardon me?
It won't, that body shop doesn't exceed what they can handle.
Right.
Which is why they want to know. And it doesn't.
I don't know if this is what you're getting at, Peter, there's a federal law called the Community Right to Know Law, where if your store and has this materials over certain quantities, you have to notify the local fire department.
I, I just have the impression that in the fire department guys like to know when they go into a building, if there, you know, they're supposed to know in town, what buildings have, you know, have, you know, fire, you know, flammable stuff, material in there, right? If they don't know, you know, they go in there and, and there is, you know, there's a, it's problematic to the town, they found, you can sue, alright?
Yeah.
So I think the fire chief needs to be, uh, brought to detention, the fire chief, they go down, take a look at the site, so they, they can take an inventory, so they know what's down there.
Then, um, my recollection from when we did the site visit was the way you described, described that you're not doing whole body, whole auto painting, hence why you don't need a ventilation system. You're not storing acetone and other types of solvents, you're.
Literally, we were, we've only done like little touch-ups here and there with like aerosol can, like rock panel touch-ups here and there, just little spots that would fix.
Nothing, no real paint.
So it's almost like somebody's garage.
Yeah, it's not, it's not like a real.
And we're not even doing anything with it now, anyway, Rick went off on his own, so, which is.
Well, okay.
I, I mean.
I, I want, I, 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 I think we need something definitive and writing, and, uh, I'm just looking out for the guys in the fire department. So I just, that's where I'm coming from, so I want, I think it'd be appropriate that we get kind of the fire department, you gotta take a look at it, so they can give us a little quick note back, whatever they think is there, see, whatever.
I'm just sure because it's not on the law.
Yeah, it, it's not on the road order law, but.
It's not on anything.
But it's part of, part of your proposal, I mean, it's part of the, uh, amendment to your original approval, it's, it's, it's part of your business.
Maybe we should indicate that it's not being, it's not being used and not going to be used then, because without the guy that was doing the little bits of work there, it's not gonna, we're not gonna use it.
It's gonna be stored by G T L now, that's what it's turned out to.
Maybe we should write that, it's not gonna be that.
Well, that's, that's certainly one option, uh, the, uh, i- if indeed that's what, you know, you're gonna do in the future, you know, it, because you can't say that now, and then, you know, a year from now, decide, oh, found somebody else and.
Right.
I'm gonna start paying. The, uh, I, I, I mean, I wasn't concerned about it because of the way you described the operation, it almost was like household levels of hazardous materials, you know, like what I have in my shed.
Right.
Um, the, uh, versus your more, um, you know, true bo- auto body repair shop.
Um, I'm just over, I'm trying to downsize as small as possible, if I got body work, paint stuff that used to be done, I'm just taking it over to Thompson's Body Shop. I grew up with Steve, went to school with Steve, and that's just how it's gonna be from now on.
Okay, well, indicate that in here someplace.
Well, and that, that should then be indicated, you know, we, we, we had you add the body.
Right.
Elsewhere, that probably should be struck, um.
Right.
Um, as well from the application then.
Or at least.
Or, or.
Qualified.
Or qualified, yeah, I guess qualified, that that building is not.
Personal storage.
Right.
Because like even on your site drawing, you have it labeled as body shop.
It should probably be the same, like, something like this, I don't know what we call it.
I don't know, garage or.
For personal storage.
It's basically like a garage, and it's kind of like his mother's Garage World, because it's right, you know, her house there.
But whatever, we should probably, should probably just put it to garage storage.
Alright, so you want us to do that on the map, two of us?
Yeah, yep.
If, if that's truly, you know, how are you gonna use it in the future?
Yeah.
Yep.
Then you should take it on both, back it to them, right?
Because Pete makes an important point, I, I don't think the quantities, uh, that you were describing to us when we were out there, um, you know, like spray cans, uh, that we all have in our, you know, basement. you know, like spray cans, uh, that we all have in our, you know, basements, garages, sheds, um, are the kinda thing that are, uh, any different than what the fire department encounters going and responding to a residential fire. But in contrast, for example.
But that's a good point.
Out, out at the septic, sys- at the septic, uh, facility on the Penny Road there, for a while, they were storing, uh, wood alcohol in large quantities that they were legally required to notify the fire department that they were doing so, because it's obviously very flammable and would pose a real threat to the, uh.
Right.
For, for, um, people when responding to a fire.
Change that to garage storage.
Yeah, but this is my, do we, we should do this on your copy maybe, right? This is like kind of a, our crappy copy.
His copy, right?
Right?
Right, well, make sure that on the copy.
The original.
And, uh.
And in the packet, so probably one of these ones.
Well, when will it come back, will it? Go back, or can we move on? I don't know. I wanna like, we'll have to do it.
In this section?
Well, we're in this area, um. Is the footprint of any building greater than ten, ten thousand square feet? You said no, it is not in excess of ten thousand square feet. But we did say there is a building there.
Correct.
Well, we just wrote no.
We, yeah, we, we changed it to no, but we, I think we were talking about the next one after that.
No, we were down to.
Go to number sixteen. There was development, that's where you wrote in.
Okay, yeah, so go to sixteen. Where it talks about.
Yeah, that's good, Roger. We're gonna qualify right there.
It's gonna be back then.
Page six.
Yep. Right. And you said that in.
Yeah, so. We'll just bring in that.
We just cross it out?
Keep the dimensions the same.
Do you, is, is that what you got, you want it done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
It's a good point.
You all set?
Yep. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. We're down to forty-one, we talked about is, is the proposed development in the village district, we said no. Uh, forty-two, describe vegetative screening to be provided and maintained along all public roads. Nothing there.
Well, the ordinance requires maintaining a thirty-five foot vegetative buffer along the, the, um, public road. And then, uh, with regard to forty-two, and I think since you got all trees there, it's just a matter of saying you're gonna maintain those, uh, in a thirty-five foot width from the road. And, uh, and probably showing that on the site drawing, but we'll get to that, I think, later. But that, that's what the ordinance requires, is, you know, maintaining a thirty-five foot, uh, natural.
Natural.
Vegeta- yeah, ve- vegetated buffer along Noel's Road.
Yeah.
Well, Ben's Way, right?
Ben's Way and Ben's Road.
Noel's Road, right, cause we're talking about a public road. But at Ben, at the entrance of Ben's Way?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Uh, next forty-three, describe vegetative screening to be provided and maintained along property line with the abiding residential properties. Uh, we have done one here. So.
The or- yeah, the ordinance requires a fifty-foot buffer. I mean, you got all kinds of, not only, I mean, you got more, far more than that. So it's just a matter of saying you're gonna maintain fifty feet of forest.
Right, we will. No, maybe write a minimum of.
For some projects, this is a difficulty, not for you.
All set?
Yep.
Uh, provide number, size, uh, location, anchoring and height off ground of each proposed advertising or informational sign. Um, you've indicated only one sign on the property, is this, no, on Ben's Way? Uh, so this is, so is the board okay with this? We're going to talk this in a minute.
Yeah, we're really not dealing with the other.
Right, right.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, no, we, we, we need to just focus on the, the new.
Right, new. Will any exterior signs be illuminated? No. Will illumination be brighter than fifty foot candles at as measured one or equal sign? Is any sign to be elec- electronically visually capable sign? Describe solid waste to be generated, including types of waste. Uh, number forty-eight, will oil or petroleum or propane be stored or handled on site other than during project construction? A heating oil tank smaller than three hundred and thirty three ga- three hundred and thirty gallons or a propane tank two hundred gallons or smaller? And you indicated no. Um, and since it's no, it's not yes, there's, we have done it for if yes, describe types involved. After that one, which seems like it's associated with, how will, how will be stored on site? If not stored on site. Last number sixteen, which, which state of federal permits, registration, registration or tools are required to store or handle oil, petroleum or propane associated with this proposal? We have nothing there because we're not storing it, right? If a main state fire marshal permit is required for construction of above ground storage tanks, right, no, but you're not, so there's nothing there. Is a U S E P A spill prevention control and countermeasure required? You indicated no. Uh, forty-nine, will hazardous substances, substances be stored on site or used? You said no. Number fifty, will hazardous special or universal wastes be generated by the project or use? You indicated no. And since no, nothing for describing the type or how will they be stored?
Now, the answer to this, no, because nothing's gonna occur on this amended property and that anything he does regarding antifreeze and oil will actually happen at the other property. Is that why it's no? But I assume it must be generating some oils and whatever. Maybe not.
Um, yeah, the answer, I think, my sense is the answer is yes, that on the property that's, you know, on the storage area and, and there's no oils or other materials being generated or stored, just auto parts and stuff like that is what I recall from our site visit, you know? And, um, and, you know, we hopefully dealt with that at the, uh, repair shop, uh, and I know when we've, what you were describing was that you had, you bring your waste oil to some, uh, you used to bring it to the town, transfer station, now you're bringing it to somebody's shop.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, in Augusta, he has, uh, one of those, uh, oil burn.
Waste oil burners, yeah.
So I, I interpreted the same way, Rich.
Okay. Yeah.
So I think we're through that one, so turning the page to, uh, the next one. Next question, um, if you answered yes to the question forty-eight through fifty, and you had to answer these, these, provide information. Since you didn't answer yes, there's nothing to fill out there. For fifty-one. Actually, or fifty-two. Actually, wait, for fifty-one. Fifty-two says, will the proposed activity discharge pollutants to any surface water bodies or groundwater? Including by a way of subs- uh, including by a way of subsurface wastewater disposal system? I think we need an answer there.
We put no in initial bit from the last meeting.
Okay.
Number fifty-three, will any groundwater discharge result in any groundwater quality measure exceed one half of federal primary drinking water standards or state acts on exposure drinking water guidelines? The answer is no. Will groundwater exceed any federal secondary drinking water standard? You said no. Will groundwater withdrawal, including for drinking water supply or alterations to a site's surface water recharge characteristics lower the groundwater cable to be on the property line? You said no. Uh, fifty-five, provide the total area in square feet of impervious area of the development or use, including but not limited to the footprint of all structures as well as the age and gravel, parking, roads, walkway, et cetera. This we had discussions of, uh.
Alright.
Alright, so now are we talking, let me think about it, cause we had twenty-seven three, twenty-seven thousand three hundred square feet is what the proposed gravel area. Is that sufficient, is the board satisfied with that value for this question?
I guess that goes back to what I brought up with George, if you, was Ben's Way constructed as a result of this, before this project? Or was Ben's Way there before? Cause if it's part of this project, I think we gotta include the road.
Yeah.
So, so the road, well, the road, you figure it's three hundred feet long times ten.
Three thousand.
That's three thousand, so. Three thousand square feet added on to twenty-seven three.
Thirty thousand.
Uh, three. Thirty thousand.
Three.
Three hundred, so, put that.
Yep. Is the board okay with that? Are we?
Yeah, no, that's a good point on Rich's part.
Yep. Fifty-six, provide the total square feet of disturbed area of the development or change use, uh, or changing use.
So that'd be the same as him, right?
Correct. Then you've indicated, um, how many linear feet of new road driveway is proposed? You said three hundred. Next one, in which lake watershed is the proposed development located? Could we talk about the last?
Yeah, we put maximum signed and dated.
Fifteen, what is the allowed phosphorus export in House Break or satisfy our sixty of this one? Do we have a guide here?
We put point zero six eight and signed and dated.
Thank you, Austin. Has this development received a stormwater permit from the name Department of Environmental Protection under the name Stormwater Management Law? I mean, it's, no. I'm just reading down below, says if your response to question sixty is no and the development as proposed will exceed three thousand square feet of disturbed area or exceed seven thousand square feet of impervious surfaces or will include one or two fifty feet of new roadway or driveway. Phosphorus export from the development must be controlled in accordance with the requirements of our P six B, including the store one of phosphorus. With control features shown on the site plan. If the total disturbed area will exceed thirty thousand square feet or the linear length of proposed driveway exceeds three hundred fifty feet, stormwater phosphorus residue professional. The stormwater phosphorus control plan must be prepared and the control features designed by a professional engineer. So now that we've got, cause we did the calculation before, forty, with the rectangle of that, that's twenty-seven three.
Right.
Now, when we go at that, oh, we're at thirty thousand three. So there's meaning of taking the whole back to thirty, meaning excessive thirty thousand.
Yeah.
So that gets back to that one, and see where we are.
Yep.
So that, we will need that.
Okay.
What's that gonna cost? Well, that's right, you know, that's right off over, you know, it's barely over the, uh, minimum required. Right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it might cost them ten thousand dollars, twenty thousand for five. I mean, I, I can get quite a burden upon the app. I mean, you know, you gotta give them, you know, like. I'm putting myself in shoes of, you know, we even got a cutoff point, but sometimes you gotta give it, give a person a little bit of leeway. I mean, it's gonna cost a lot of money. You wanna know that. So, that's a consideration.
When, when we were out at, at the site, we were talking about this, cause at that time, we, we all thought that it was over thirty thousand square feet, uh, just in the back storage area. Um, it sounded like, I, you made it sound like this wasn't gonna be a, a undue burden for you, cause you had somebody that you knew that was an engineer, is that correct?
No.
No? Okay.
No.
Alright, I, I, I got the wrong impression.
Actually, when we still, when we still, uh, thought it was over that print, like right after we did the site, this and everything, we actually tried to get a hold of a few engineers and geo engineers, and I talked to one and he goes, he goes, I don't deal with like getting like, uh, fa- getting foundate- ready for foundations and stuff like that. He goes, but, he gave me this other guy's number in Augusta and he won't answer his phone and he won't call me back. And everybody's told me he's the only one that'll be able to do it. And everybody's told me he's the only one that'll be able to do it.
Well, there are quite a few people that can do it, um.
Probably under.
We're not under that.
That.
Would the, would the road, were three hundred square feet over?
Well, I'm gonna go back and re-measure it.
Measure the road maybe, and the road, I mean, it's three hundred square feet, what's that?
When you did the measurement of your, your storage area, did you measure from the disturbed, top of the disturbed banks or the ditches, with the disturbance to disturbance?
Yes.
Or the actual gravel area?
No, the disturbance to disturbance.
I'd say you probably, I would think that if you were to avoid the professional engineer thing, if you restored three hundred square feet. So you're down, in other words, take ten by thirty somehow, or three hundred square feet.
Replant it.
Dimensions are, and kind of re-veget- re, it might need to regrade something, it might need, maybe just vegetate it, or whatever, to get it below.
That, that's actually an excellent thought, because it would not be difficult for you to do, get some ceilings and put it in that area that's, um, um, not up here where you have the steep slope, but down, down here where you obviously cleared it, and there were trees there.
Right.
But to, uh.
But I'm not even using.
Yeah, but you're not using it, it's not filled in, it, it's, you know, and, and take that out of the, you know, like we said, take, take that out of that, uh, square footage.
Right.
To get under the thirty thousand square feet.
Yep.
Because, because then, then the requirement in the ordinance becomes just to, uh, ensure the water is moving and infiltrating into the woods, which it is now, and you can skin that cat by just maintaining your buffer strips that we've already talked about.
Right.
Uh, because, uh, you know, for Meszulonski with that, and same with the phosphorus control, uh, it just so happens worked out that, um, with, uh, phosphorus budget for that lake, you needed a wooden buffer, uh, strip of fifty feet, which is what the other requirement is. So. That's a good thought, Rich.
That's a great thought, and we thank you, help, help you not have to trigger that requirement of a professional, having a professional engineer do it.
Right.
Because we don't need all that's, that entire lot anyway, you know? If I, like, I would've just moved all this stuff away.
The lower part of the law, the lower part of the law, that rounds back around, that's, we ain't even doing nothing, that whole edge across there, so. They're just like he said, plant grass all back across there.
Let it grow up in the woods.
Right.
Yeah. Maybe some trees around there.
And maybe, I don't know, but I'm thinking we'll probably end up cleaning again, and we could do that, and after probably a few weeks, grass will start growing, and maybe we could pit, take a, take a picture of that and add it to a packet as well.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd rather do that than have a geoengineer hire that, I, you know.
Yeah, right.
Well, or, you know, again, just speaking for myself, I would be okay with, um, you know, just something in the application that commits you to, because this isn't the greatest time of year to be growing trees or grass or anything, much of anything else. Uh, you know, that within six months or before, you know, like, say, October fifteenth, uh, you know, you plant some tree seedlings or, or whatever you wanna put in there.
So we can make, write some.
Yeah, because you don't wanna plant it and have it die.
Right.
In the middle of the summer, you know, and you sure as heck don't wanna be watering it.
So we need to write something that.
But it would have to be something added to the application as part of your, because it's still required, there's still a requirement to address stormwater and phosphorus can run off. And it could be part of that. You know, that, that you're gonna reduce, reduce the amount of, uh, of, uh, disturbed area to below thirty thousand square feet by planting a vegetation.
So maybe go back to fifty-five and add that in where we got the thirty thousand three hundred.
Um, oh, I see what you're saying, so if you decide to, to alter the amount by re-vegetating the park, and you reduce it, indicate that number to fifty-five, right?
Right.
Carry forward to fifty-six, then, up in what we're talking about.
Maybe, but we'll reduce at least three hundred square feet, so.
Yeah, just do your measurements and then indicate what it is.
Could write in something like, uh, thirty thousand three hundred square feet currently, but will be reduced by October two thousand eighteen, uh, to twenty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine by planting or something.
That is great.
Yeah.
You, you, where do you want me to put that one?
Um.
On.
Where are you?
Fifty-five.
Right there. We're almost, believe it or not, we're almost in the end.
Of the application.
Of the application. Because we're gonna get to a spot where we're getting the sand and gravel mining operations, which is the, uh, plan two.
I'm just glad it's not like ten thousand degrees in this room. I think it was all day.
Maybe you want to lease the rest of the land to Jason Stevens, who could use it for gravel.
Makes a lot of sense.
Okay. I think we're on sixty-one, right? Describe here or in the stormwater and phosphorus control plan provisions for monitoring and inspection, maintenance and use restrictions for stormwater slash phosphorus control measures, including buffer strips and infiltration systems. Uh, I would lean heavily on what George has indicated already, in terms of these references, places that, in the ordinance, so I have a twenty-one, twenty-two copper, um, type of filtration. You would want to make sure you have something to, to basically commit to adding those things in place.
Okay, so. Add that in here?
Yes.
It goes three thousand square feet. This new pad, two-ten by two-hundred, is forty-two thousand square feet.
This new pad is not two-ten by two.
It was three hundred by two-hundred, he cut it down to two-ten.
By one-thirty.
By one-thirty?
Okay.
You wanted to say, like, fifty-foot buffers maintained in wilds?
Um, how does the board feel?
Um, for infiltration of stormwater.
That would be sufficient.
Yeah. Because your site drawing shows that, you know, the stormwater from the high ground will be all diverted over there.
And I'll just, I'll sign and be that.
Yep. Okay, we'll move to sixty-two. Sixty-two is development or change of use to include, then check everything in the protocol, no mi- mineral extraction or processing facility, open air accommodations, bed and breakfast, telecommunication, telecommunication tower, and, 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 none of the check, none of the five, is that correct?
Right.
Sixty-three, for existing sand and gravel, sand, existing gravel, sand or mining operations.
Rest of the application doesn't apply.
So we are at the end of the application. Our, my sense is we still need some more, a little more information. I think the board can read it, and I don't wanna be late for the meeting. So we talked about what those things are, right? And, uh, we need to get those from you, um, and not from you. So, looking forward to seeing you in the future. So this is gonna be an honest.
Honest.
Second, second call.
Maybe it'd be good to recap some of the bigger pieces that we need.
Yes.
Same time.
Yes. Oh, seven, yes. So do you have the pieces that we've been talking about?
I think I do, um.
Let's make sure we're.
Copy of the dealer license, and we need to get a hold of Jason and get his D E P certification number.
Yes.
And then, uh, over, you know, stretch of time, we'll need to fix that area to reduce, so we don't have to hire a geoengineer.
Correct.
If you can get a hold of Jason, give Gary a call, I'm quite sure he's got a number.
Give who a call?
Gary.
Oh, Gary. Oh, oh, yep.
The other thing, you said you were gonna, um, you were talking about amending the, um, lease.
Oh, yes.
And so we would need that once that was completed.
So, can I just make another one?
Yep. And I tagged right down the details.
Peter, one, one, um, big, larger item that, uh, because I don't want them going away without, uh, knowing about this, but, um, unless you had talked about it at the last meeting, uh, I, I didn't see a, a soil erosion control plant. Quite a bit of fair soil out there that's unstabilized.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't.
The ditching, you turned up the slopes and the ditching.
Yeah, and the, and the ditching.
I think that's, to me, that when I, uh, saw the application and everything, and then went to the site, the main issue to me, two issues were originally, and I know we're not talking about, we're really talking about storage of the building, and I, so I gotta separate initially, you know, where's the oil going in the paint shop or the body shop, kind of thing. Uh, the only other issue I had, significant issue, was kind of, hmm, there's a lot of banks here that, not that there's, it's a, well, put it this way, it's, it's not going too far.
No, it's not.
But.
But it is roting.
Banks need, should be stabilized with some vegetation, and that would just be grass or something.
Yeah.
Which number is that we can point them to, like, erosion control?
Um, well, it's on page twenty-two of the ordinance, and it's on the checklist, um, that's why I bring it up now, because it's not in the application.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's one of the checklist items. And, and, you know, in, amongst the submission, in the requirements.
So maybe, maybe also we'll add some vegetation along the, on the high bank of the disturbed area, where the runoff is.
Yep, there, and, and stabilize the ditching.
Yep.
Uh, really, that's, that's it, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know about you, Rich, in terms of what you saw.
From what I saw, I was, uh, uh, that would be sufficient.
Yeah, and that could be just a little write-up that you submit, call it soil erosion control, and, 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 and probably a timeframe for doing that.
We'll put, like, uh, we'll put the same as we did for the, the three hundred square.
Yeah, right, yeah, because you don't wanna be doing that seeding now, because you wanna be doing that like in September.
Right.
So how do you stabilize the ditching? Rock, so what?
Well, or, you, you, it, since it's flat, you could seed that, or you can put down that, um, that straw matting over the grass.
Yeah.
Like you can see the O T U's all.
And, you folks have, um, thank you very much. Um, we talked about, uh, I know you have a copy of this checklist, it's written on this one, so if we have a good chance to take a look at it, really happy that George brought that, we're gonna pull it up, so we don't want you to be surprised when we're done, so please have a good chance to take a look at it.
No, I feel good about this, like, we've covered a lot of areas that comes off sand and, 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 so, yeah.
Do you have any other questions for us?
Not, not yet.
Does the board? Does the board have any other questions for the applicants?
No.
So I, I think we need a motion to table this, um, so, such, rear back the, uh, right, it's a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion, uh, table the application. Do we need to give a date?
No, I don't think so.
No, make a motion to table the application.
Second. We have a motion in a second, any more discussion? Any questions? Anything else? All those in paper. So thank you for your time, really appreciate it, I know it's a lot, I'm very grateful, and very patient with us, thank you for getting this. And, uh, for one, I, I appreciate your thoroughness in trying to move the government, it's not like we're doing it by ourselves. There's a lot we said, so, thanks. Good luck, we'll keep on asking questions, keep asking us, we know Gary, right?
Yeah.
He's, he's a professional, he knows his stuff, and I know, if you get a chance to, you know, then at some point, um, that's very helpful.
Thanks, everybody, for being patient with us, too, and helping us.
Very well.
It's a problem. A good idea.
Good night, drive clear, watch out for deer.
Me too.
You know, when we left the, uh, um, site visit, a little one in there.
That was what, maybe two days old?
Yeah.
Oh, that's what Craig was scooping up, oh, I didn't know what it was, like, it, it, that was real little one.
Yeah, it was, it wasn't any, any bigger than, you know, the dog I got at home.
Yeah, no, I, I, that's what I thought it was, I thought it was a dog or a fox or something like that, I didn't even.
I hated to say that, because that dog had after we got there.
It did.
Was that right on, uh, Noah's road or not?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's right, that happened.
Was that a recent, was stick trying to get it off the road?
Yes.
So someplace up the woods, there's another probably with an old little one.
Yeah.
Black and white.
Yeah.
Alright, so for the application packet that you received tonight. Do you guys want another copy of the application, or the edits, or next one?
Oh.
I mean, if you get a new one from that, it's fine.
Well, no, well, this one has all the edits and stuff.
Oh, I got enough, I personally got enough markups on my own, that I think I'm good.
We'll save it, have it written on the paper this time.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Okay, alright, so, moving on. Uh, site visit notes, thank you for, George, thank you for tagging up the, uh, site visit notes to that. Excellent recap, what you had, and, um, yeah, thank you for allowing me to introduce my, my.
Oh, yeah, no.
I couldn't, I couldn't, like, it sounded like the only time we could go back to yours, is when we were at the back of the truck. Which was when I was.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's why I circulate it.
All right, great.
And that should be part of the file, I guess.
Yes, do you have this? Um, are we okay to move on from the Ben Morrison application? All right, uh, this has been published?
That has, uh, I was gonna publish it Saturday, you guys were okay with it.
Does everybody have the, the notice of public information?
This weekend, next week. Hope you sat next to this one.
Do you have this?
This one here.
No, it says notice of public information.
Oh, there it is, I got it, I got it.
Town of Belgrade, got it? Just what Nick is proposing that we have published, we just give it a look.
I do have a question. There are talks about comments on the quote, or not quote, I'm quoting, final draft. Over the last two weeks, I have gone through this again, uh, page by page or whatever, and I've got further edits. I haven't given the George yet. I don't know if anybody else went through and read it, but I do notice that there are definitely some sections, reference section fifteen P that I'll be all and stuff like that.
Right.
And there's a few places where we've got the words tidal water and stuff like that in there, and that, that doesn't need to be in our ordinance. So, anyway, uh, I don't know whether the best thing to do is, and it would happen, I guess it would happen prior to us meeting again. Maybe we, maybe as a board you want to just say, no, we're gonna give them what we have right here. Or, well, Rich and George get together, fixes up and give it to Nick so he can print that out. But that will have been done without the board's consent, so to speak, 'cause we're not gonna meet again before then, correct?
Correct.
So, you would put it in your trust in our hands that the additional changes are okay. Uh, or else we hand out what we've got and then make the changes later. But, I guess I'd say I don't think it's a final draft or whatever, at this point.
I was gonna suggest we delete finally, put in something like current.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea. But even things like the wrong paragraph references and section references or whatever, I personally think we ought to change that before, or, or are we not gonna have copies for the public at this thing? Are we just gonna describe in generality what we've done, like, over that?
I was anticipating we'd have copies for any way that we can attend this.
I, I was gonna suggest that we, um, clearly labeled as draft, 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 draft everywhere, um, but that, that, that a draft be available on the website along with a copy of this and that we have a note in here saying, such that, you know, go to the town website to see a copy of the draft and a, and a, and a, you know, the summary.
That's a great idea.
'Cause that, I mean, you, you really want people to review it in advance, you'd be able to review it in advance of the meeting, otherwise, you know, they're not gonna come, they're gonna come with some questions, but they're not gonna be able to offer much in the way of comments.
Right. So, can you make that happen?
Yes, who you want?
Good.
You want summary?
Well, or these highlights that.
In the notice themselves?
No, 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 just on the website, making note that, you know, see website for highlights and, and copy of current draft.
Right, that's the goal. Yeah?
And I'll send out, you only send out another draft tomorrow before I send to the press, or you want to send out the press?
Oh.
Of the notice?
Of the notice, yeah.
No, as long as you include that, I'm, at least I'm good.
I'm good, remove file, I'm good.
Remove file and add, you know, the reference to materials on the website.
On the website. Okay?
You're okay with this weekend and the next weekend? Up to dates, what's going on in the paper? Or you want all in one, like, two days, right back to back?
I don't care, doesn't matter to me.
Two days back to back, then?
Well, 'cause it says, if you read it, it says it just has to be in the paper twice, it doesn't say back to back, or it just says, so I just, I'm just gonna spread it out, so.
Thank you, yeah, do that, that'd be great. So, that, so we have a direction on the notice, right, we have direction?
And, and at the, last time we discussed this, we, um, we had developed sort of a short list of interested parties, send that to, and I have a couple of other suggestions to make, um, for that, if others are in agreement, um, one is Dick Born. Because, um, he, he's been valuable so far and I think we wanna make sure he knows about this. Uh, I actually have his ad, email address here, um, I've had it, and there's, there's a gentleman who's, uh, always showed up, always showed up when we did stuff with the commercial development review ordinance, and he shows up periodically, uh, Max Docow. Yeah, he, he's a former town, what, what's that?
He's on the field board now.
Oh, is he? Oh, I didn't know that, oh, okay, well, then maybe he'll know about it anyway. I, I just thought because he's given us, you know, thoughtful comments in the past, so, anyway. These are your email addresses if you don't have them.
So, uh, in that same vein, what do we, Rich, the big, Rich, um, the doctor here, comes in all the time?
I have him.
Oh, okay.
Good doctor.
Yeah, good point.
And then, I am a lumber?
We're not gonna, yeah.
So, so you may wanna, put, put Tukey lumber in there too. You don't wanna discriminate according to size.
Anything with lumber in your name.
Right.
They never should, they never come, but.
And, and, yeah, so, I just thinking, you may wanna do the, the, the landscaping guys here, there's a couple landscapers here in, in town. The one guy over in the, on Route eleven.
Lakeside.
Lakeside, native notions.
And the fellow that's here on Route twenty-seven.
Native notions. Good, you guys good with that? Really good thought, get all the people involved, or at least invite, whether they show or not, it's a different story. Everybody has a life outside of this. All right, did, um, people get, um, Raj, you probably didn't get mine via email, I wanna make sure we tackle this, but you have cut this now, right? So, um, I had gone through and tried to make sure I referenced the correct page, did anybody else get a chance to look at what I did?
Well, I couldn't check it 'cause the version I had didn't have the changes that we discussed at the last meeting, including the elimination of all the comments, which was gonna change the page nation.
So, what do we do?
Unless you haven't already done that, Nick, 'cause.
What, cover the comments and stuff?
Yeah.
Again, and just match it up, hold on to that.
Well, you, you got these page numbers off of, uh, the version with the comments still on it.
Right.
'Cause we had discussed, uh, getting rid of those, um, in terms of what the public would see.
Well, they're gonna need more work than it's worth. I don't know, we have to be able to point to people to where they find, I'm thinking select persons. Where anybody who asks a question, like, when we say, we're talking about this, where do we find this? We wanna be able to point them to it.
Right. No, I, I agree. So, I mean, if you, you know, um, the easiest thing would be to just stick with the version that has the comments in it, even though it says stuff like, Rich, did you look at this? You idiot?
Actually, some of those, uh, comments can be deleted now, couldn't they, depending on?
Probably.
If it's kind of, did you, yeah, did you look at, if we already addressed it as board here last time, that comment, it might be, you know.
It, it's just a question of what can we do between now and, you know, when you need to put this on the website, and it isn't even when the meeting's gonna be, it's, you know, I mean, when the notice goes out, it's when.
Right, I have like the.
Yeah, so that, so that's sort of like now.
Yeah, I can look at it tomorrow and just see if I can look at, come on, with the comments, and then when I get rid of all comments, just see where it ends up on those pages. Just change it that way, or I'm gonna just get rid of the, the actual comments, keep that thing there, so it keeps it all the same pages as it's all.
I like the last part, and then it's, another one, just gonna edit it. Well, I, I don't know, um, I don't wanna make your life more difficult, I just wanna, I want people to be able to say, oh, this is where I find where, where mine is. So, whatever's easiest to do that, I don't, I don't mind either way.
Yeah, no, either's fine with me, uh, I agree, it would be helpful to people, um, to have the page numbers in.
All right.
I guess, I still got a further question, do we want to put on the website the version of the ordinance that we are, I particularly know is referencing wrong sections? Or should we fix that before we put it on the website?
So, if we fix it like what you have done, right? Well, we should, we should have that one, we should have the right one, not the wrong one. It might as well be.
None of the changes I propose are significant, policy changes, it's more editing changes. I, I, it comes down to, I don't know, do you, did you get your, your thumb drive back? Or does Nick still have it?
It might still be on my desktop by this time.
Yeah, I don't think I did.
And the next question is, could George do it to get back to Nick?
Well, that's, I mean, 'cause last time, yeah, that was my next question, 'cause we don't wanna have too many cooks in the, in the kitchen. After the last meeting, you know, Nick was sort of delegated, uh, with the, uh, responsibility for making the edits.
Right, yeah.
And so, you know, if we're gonna shift over to Nick doing it, then that's what we should continue to do.
Absolutely.
If you want me to do it, I'm willing to do it, but, you know, then I need to do, do the others too.
Yeah, let's keep it simple, straightforward, Rich, can we have what you, so that line?
Drop it off to Nick tomorrow. So I can make clear what the specific changes are, there's a couple of them which I, this is in my throat, would discuss with the board at some point. Uh, that we won't do those, I'll make it very clear to Nick, these are the ones that need to change, paragraph, O versus R or something like that. I'll do that tomorrow.
I mean, we could talk about those, uh, in this, at the same meeting that we've discussed, whatever comments we might get from the public and whether or not we wanna make any subsequent changes as a result of those.
Right, 'cause it's very possible that comments from the public result in.
Well, it did with the commercial development review ordinance.
Okay, so, do we tackle those things sufficiently? I feel good about it. Do we, I mean, heavily, I mean, for a lot of things, I, I, we, um, we also, since we're gonna have this informational meeting, also thinking about November, what, where, and voting, right? So, between now and then, we need to be on track with informational meeting, um, hearing.
I'm seeing another public in his office.
So, we just, I just need to know that we have timelines laid out so we can all understand it and the public understands it, so we can get through each of those steps and get to response, and we are now ready. Print it, have an article, well, right, can't miss it.
Well, at the last meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm recalling this incorrectly, Nick, um, I believe we concluded that we had to have a final draft, ready to go to, be posted to public hearing at the end of August?
We just mentioned that.
Oh, okay.
But it was quiet.
Yes.
Sorry.
So, yes.
If it wasn't that, I wouldn't pay attention, but I didn't hear it.
So, yes, end of August is a good thing to keep in mind, right? I just wanted to know about it. Okay? Now, is there anything else we need to talk about, Frank?
So, we, so we, the timeline looks like it's going to be November the seventh, you know, the, the vote will be November seventh?
Yeah, it's the, November sixth is the first Tuesday in November.
Yeah. So, what's, what's the rumor, what's the, what's the expected date that the selectmen are gonna take a look at for the first time?
We can decide to bring it to them, um, at some point, maybe by end of August. You know, we are having an informational meeting, you know, and they are asked to attend.
But.
Um, we don't know if they'll, and, want to, but at least we'll be going through that process, getting to a final that's ready for publication, maybe that'll be a good time to have, have a, a one-on-one, sit down with them or whatever.
Yeah, okay, I'm getting it, so we, we should maybe have a special meeting, or we get on their, get on their agenda type of thing.
Yeah, get on their agenda.
On their Cozy Night, yeah.
So, that probably needs to happen, uh, in their first meeting in August.
First meeting in August, yeah?
If you do that, now, just as soon as, as soon as you get the final draft, send them each copy.
Yeah, we can do that too, no problem.
As well, right, and then have the meeting, so they're, they've done their homework and they're all set to go.
Part of their packet.
Right.
First meeting, August? 'Cause if we have, uh, say we get through the informational meeting in July and there's no extra comments that, or no comments that change anything, then we can quickly go to, I think, what would be considered a, we call a final draft at that point? I think so.
Well, we still got the subset of things that Rich has, uh, for us, we, you know, there's clean, a fair amount of cleanup that needs to happen, yet, table contents, all that kind of stuff, but I, I think you wanna meet with them before it's time to ask them to post it to public hearing, 'cause.
Short time after.
Yeah, uh, 'cause, um, you know, in case they have questions or, or concerns of their own that don't come out in the pub, they don't, don't attend the public informational meeting for some reason, um, the, um, that maybe we have to address.
Yeah.
Allow some time for that.
So, if we met with them in early August, that would allow us to do that.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Or ask, yeah, ask.
They may say no. Okay?
Just tell them.
Is that, just tell them?
Tell them. I mean, it's.
So, does that help, Pete?
Yeah, it helps a lot.
Timeline, we're gonna have our informational meeting, or if we have a chance to meet with the select board, hopefully, you know, get to a spot where we have final draft by end of August, you know, and then this ever go forward.
Yeah, but I was thinking, if, once, soon as we get, get it to the selectmen, and they, and they think, you know, we're full, short in time, this, whatever, they can give us extra resources. You know, or if we need them.
Yep.
And they get the money, if I should get things moving on.
Okay.
Put the burden upon them.
Okay.
Yeah, working in their first meeting in August, well, so, twelve, two, they talk about.
Yeah. I think we also, at our last meeting, discussed having, since, another meeting in July, right? We still on board with that? Everybody?
Yeah.
No conflicts?
Yeah, what, what's the date that we?
It would be a week after the nineteenth, and the twenty-sixth, if I'm, I'm gonna math correctly. That would allow us to do more. That would allow us to do more permanent application work, right? If it's coming in, I'm expecting we might have, probably well timed.
So we could, will we make that decision at our next meeting? Or is that too late in terms of advertising?
It's a public, it'll be a public hearing, it's time for, it'll be seven days.
Yeah, so that's fine, in terms of announcing a new, another, um,
Meeting, those meetings.
Plan, plan more, just regular meetings.
We tend to any business that's from a the town, well, we've been fortunate in some ways in that we haven't been overly burdened by that, seeing that we know that the CEO has talked about some interest in the company.
So, so are there applications queuing up or?
That's, that was what I got from Gary, that was the first one I got. I don't know how many, I think part of it might be just regular summertime activity, I don't know. That's my expectation. Do you have any other sense?
I actually haven't heard of them, I think it's a little hard with this.
Yeah. Hey, maybe it'll turn out that we won't have them, but.
I doubt it. This time of the year.
Any other information for tonight to discuss? Gary's gonna, Gary gives the, an update. Rich?
Uh, I'm remiss in getting back to you, our last meeting, I forgot to bring up. You had gotten this letter from Mr. Churchill or emails or whatever for the lot down on Foster Point Road where he was questioning that he and his brother bought this lot from Skip Hammond years ago and they thought it was a buildable lot, but since then, he's been told it's unbuildable and he asked questions about that. I looked at the town tax maps and he owns a lot that has a camp on it. This other lot that he's referring to, he and his brother bought under Camp Moon Corporation.
Right.
They're under two different names. If he had bought that lot as his own lot, the answer would have been, you, you just bought a non-conforming lot next to your non-conforming lot, which both of them are for a lot size and fundage. You now own one lot and that would be the answer, but because
Separated.
They're in separate ownership, so to speak. We, they're not forced to be combined, they're owned by two different people, so they're two different lots. And then it comes down to it's in Resource Protection Salt District. And it is, I went down and looked at it, it kinda goes down like that. And I think our answer to him is that it's in a Resource Protection Salt District. We have this section and section sixteen Z or whatever the heck it is, a, uh, special exception for resource protection. If he can meet the criteria in that section, which I don't think he can, then it would be possible to get a building permit and, uh, but, yeah, I'm not sure what we tell him other than that. I can write up a draft letter for you if you'd like or a draft email to send him if you haven't done something already.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, and, you know, part of his question is, he's been told that if it's unbuildable, uh, realtors have told him it's worth nothing and he's been paying tax on it. I guess, I don't know whether we put him a letter, well, if you have an issue, if, if you can't build on it and you're questioning taxes, you need to talk to the town assessors or whoever it is, uh, and leave it at that. You know, I, you know, we don't wanna get in a position of telling him it's an unbuildable lot. We need to point him in the direction of if you can meet this, if you can, you know, section has provisions for some of these lots. But in, in the end, if it turns out he can't build on it and he has questions about taxation, he needs to talk to the tax assessor.
Thank you, Rich. So I can let you know what I did so far, cause I'm very leery about trying to conduct business via email, um, and I'm not trying to speak to the entire board when doing these things. But the, the major point I wanted to drive home with him was that the planning board is charged with processing the applications for these things. We had no application in front of us to process, therefore we could not render a decision on what he could or could not do or might, what he might want to try to do or anything theoretical. Um, I really tried to point him in that direction and say, we can, we can act on something and, um, if presented with an application, my, my thought was they wanted to get more information specifically from the planning board, we go through the process, we, we approve or deny and then point to some stuff, like sixteen, whatever it is. Um, and I did not get into anything about whether, whether he might be able to meet the, the except, uh, exception criteria, uh, exception criteria in that one. I didn't get into it.
Is this gentleman?
So you've gotten back to him in some way?
I did.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Is there a reason why he got in touch with you rather than Gary?
I don't know. I don't know why.
Has he even referenced Gary, did it not?
Right, and I think Gary pointed him in my way.
So he bought this, what, these lots from Skip Hammond?
Yeah, years ago, I think.
Oh.
Yeah.
Uh, cause he's talked about he's been paying taxes on it for twenty or thirty years.
Skip Hammond's been selling real estate down in Foster Point.
Apparently, at some point he owns some down there.
So do, you know, that I've seen floating up view is Roger LD.
Skip forty seven.
I don't know what the hell he's bought in the soul anyway.
That, that's the problem with LD, that is forty seven.
Do you have, or Roger?
Looked at another truck last week.
Huh?
Looked at another truck last week.
Uh-oh.
Twenty fifteen GMC four door, one ten daily, six point six.
Our RV ER.
Forty grand.
That's a surprise.
Is that why it is, or about thirty thousand miles?
Is it forty seven?
Did you have a different truck, is that truck out there? Oh, you wanna, you're ready Toyota? Uh-huh, okay, that's a.
I haven't pulled the trigger yet on that new truck.
In any other business we tend to? We have, that's, in that case, that's adjourned. Not too late, it's only nine forty.
So why don't you like a Toyota?
Oh, I like my Toyota. It's just that this other one will pull my gamble with, without me blinking my eyes.
What's your Toyota?
Bigger is always better.
Four point six.
Oh.
Gas drop.
Oh.
Want by my, do you want by my?
I'm looking, I just told him, I looked at him last week.
Want by my?
No.
Not too good.
Are we officially adjourned?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll save it for next meeting. But, uh, I just.